Call the auto, uh, the Board of Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, 7:00 P.M. Can we all stand for the flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, I have a quick, I'm not gonna drag it out for any length of time, but last fall, the town administrator and myself had a conversation, just a casual conversation about the struggles of trying to find staffing for the fire department and the paramedics and, uh, EMTs. So during the conversation, Matt came up with the suggestion that maybe that BBT could look into something like that. So I offered to reach out to him. And to our surprise, it worked very well. Um, the superintendent, Dr. Fitzpatrick, first got back to us on, uh, December 27th, and he provided us with a complete feasibility study for the Blackstone Valley to show what the need was, and it was justified. And with that, we, I received, um, an email from him last Friday, which was past the time to get it on our agenda, so I'm gonna just use it under this. Beginning in the fall, BBT will offer an emergency medical technician program. The program will be administered by representatives from Metro West EMS educators. All the program's instructors are either currently working in the field or have sensory tied and now wish to pass on their disvaluable information. They also have a minimum of 20 years plus experience. The program is geared towards novice learners as well as experienced learners. The training will be conducted by an accredited training institute by the state of Massachusetts' Department of Public Health and Office of Emergency Medical Services. The course will be offered in hybrid format where student learning is self-paced and assignments are due each week. Students will meet in person once a week to satisfy the hands-on portion of the course. Once the students pass the course, he or she will be eligible to take both the state and national certification exams and begin their careers in the emergency medical services. Uh, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mr. Administrator?
Well, it's extremely encouraging that BBT's taken this step, and, uh, we don't pull any punches with Dr. Fitzpatrick. When he does something, says something that we don't agree with, we make it clear that we, out of fairness, have to call out the fact that he was very open to this suggestion. He obviously put a great deal of work into it because to get the approval and sign-off of all those different agencies to establish the program was not a small undertaking.
Yeah.
And to, no small factor here is that the reputation he has built for himself and for his school probably helped move this along very quickly. Uh, but it, it meets a crying need of the Blackstone Valley communities to hire qualified paramedics to provide ambulance service to our citizens. So, uh, many thanks to the Chair of this board for being willing to be the intermediary. You know, sometimes diplomacy, if you're the one who gives the tough messages, you really shouldn't be the one who makes a request. So I was not the, the right messenger to interact with Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, with that, he, uh, the town administrator did quickly agree to allow me to do that, so.
But it goes to show that teamwork in trying to do the right thing is usually gonna work out for you. So I thank the Chair for herself, and I thank Dr. Fitzpatrick for being willing to help.
Appreciate your reference. It's great.
Anybody in the audience other than Adam that has anything? No, I don't see it. So, Adam, could you come up? The first thing on our, um, discussion is regarding the Pine Street-South Street intersection.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so we received a, uh, a concern from a resident in town who lives on Pine Street. Ever since we put new asphalt and took away all the potholes in that area, we've only got a base coat down, that the speed has increased coming into this intersection, and she nearly was, was hit head-on by another vehicle. Um, I brought the concern to the Safety Committee. The Safety Committee met, and, uh, we went over this. And, um, we've kicked a couple of different ideas back and forth about a yield sign and that, uh, different things, but right now it's still binder coat because we're not finished the project, so it'd be a great time to change this to a T-intersection. So, um, in your pack, and I'm sure you have kinda like my, our little design sketch, we kinda just like threw this together and, uh, and said, well, if we could just take out the little grass island that was there in that one side, we can just make this a T right now before they're finished the project, and this will all fall back in. I did get a rough estimate, um, and it's about an additional $26,000, which we have in Chapter 90 to do this. We are, um, we do have a new base coat that's down past this intersection on the Pine Street, so it really isn't, uh, too much of a challenge to get this done, and I think now would be a great time to do it, and the Safety Committee agreed, and that's the recommendation we're putting before you guys think.
Perfect. Anybody have any questions for Adam?
This, uh, sketch isn't to scale, I take it?
No, no, this is my handwriting. Um, yes, there is no scale involved. This is called a Sharpie. Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. That's always been a tough intersection down there anyway. Uh, and like you say, with the road improvements, speeds have only increased.
Correct.
And I think that's a, a great idea.
Good? I'm good. Entertained a motion for this.
I will make a motion to accept the sketch for the Pine Street-South Street intersection improvement.
The one labeled new design?
Yeah, yeah.
The one labeled new design.
With my bad handwriting.
The architect's signature wasn't on the bottom, so we can't.
No, never put my name on it.
Motion's been made.
Second?
And seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the next one, Adam, is the discussion regarding Gleason Court Speed Bump.
Correct. So this has been an issue ongoing back years now. Leaving the post office on the Gleason Court, it is a blind spot. The building, the way the road is in the building is, is, uh, laid out, it's very tough to see people, and people come right up quick on you. I think we've all had this happen to us. So, um, we've kicked around a bunch of ideas over the years. We put up s- signs, and it doesn't seem to help. We put up temporary speed bumps, and they were great until one of the fasteners came up and bumped the tire, you know, and then you can't plow them, so you gotta take them out. Now we're drilling holes through the road, and we're making it worse than it is. So one of the ideas I brought to the, um, Safety Committee was these, like, it's like a slow sloping speed bump. And I've seen them at my son's college, that's kinda where I got the idea from. I'm like, they're not horrible, you could plow up and over them, and this college is in New Hampshire, so you could plow over them, they're permanent, and, uh, I think this would be a great idea. The Police Chief, while the Safety Committee sat together and we, we laid out basically like where two, two of them would go, one near the stop sign coming down Gleason Court, and one coming in right at that bad, kinda like the bad blind spot when there's a delivery truck. And that way it would slow, slow them down. I mean, it won't prevent everybody, some people may try to jump them, I guess, if, if they want to, but, uh, this'll at least be slowing them down for now, and people leaving the post office can have half a chance. Um, this is basically the only other solution we can have besides relocating the road or are moving the building or some sort of different idea, but, so.
I did notice a couple of times that I was in there, the, does that box truck always park there?
The only one they're delivering, yes, that's where they deliver. The one at loading dock.
Does it stay there for a long period of time?
It's probably there about an hour every, uh, different ones come, so it's all day long, it's random times, so it depends on which box truck, but they're, they're all deliveries, so throughout the day. So usually it's like two or three a day that show up and if they're for about an hour, they're done.
Cause that, that makes that huge blind spot, that's why I asked them.
Correct.
Anybody else having questions for Adam? If not, entertain a motion to accept this speed bump proposal.
And I can give you just a little bit more of an idea. Um, the price for this will be $5,600 from HaShaw Painting. I've asked for a quote.
Yeah.
And as long as the funds go through at the town meeting, Gene has put this into my budget from salaries into expenses. That's how it'll be paid.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the speed bump proposal.
I will second that.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
We're gonna pass over number three. The next thing on our agenda is the annual town election warrant and possible votes. It's just a list of, you have, um, should I be reading this off of the, uh, audience? Or just a list of the, uh, positions? So anyways, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, uh, read off the list of positions on the annual town election. Moderator for a three-year seat, town clerk for a three-year seat, two selectmen, three-year seats, one selectman, one-year seat to fill a vacancy, uh, assessor for three years, two school committee members for three years, agent, uh, agent for Moses Wallace Device for one year, trustee public library for three years, cemetery commissioner for three years, water sewer commissioner for three years, recreation commission for three years, planning board member for five years, planning board member for one year to fill a vacancy, housing authority member for five years. Nobody has any issues with this? Make them, uh, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual town election warrant.
As presented.
As presented.
Second?
Motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next thing on our agenda is the review committee handbook Code of Conduct for boards and committees and commissions and possible votes. I don't know if anybody had any chance to look through that. I did, so if you have some stuff, then you can tell me, and then there's some edits that.
Yeah, I was thumbing through it a little bit. It's, it's a great, I think it needs some updating, obviously, it's a great thing. So I would need a little more time to go through it.
Yep, yep. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna, there's a, there's four sections that Matt just needs to look at for, uh, values that are in there. Um, it's section 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, and 5.7. And then we need a current open meeting law put in there. And there's a reserve fund transfer request form on page 25. I don't necessarily think that needs to be in there, we can probably remove that. And right after the, the beginning part, before you get into the, uh, table of contents, Lisa, if we could insert the, um, current Town of Douglas Code of Conduct, boards, commissions, and committees that we approved on July 5th to 2023. And then obviously, we're gonna tape it till these other guys have a look at it, but those that are, the wording in there seems appropriate. But I'm not a lawyer either, so.
Would this be a handbook that every committee member would?
So the goal in this is, and what prompted this was, within the last 30 days, there was a conservation meeting that went till 1:15 in the morning, and all you're gonna do is you're gonna drive volunteers away from the, away from the position, plus it shouldn't be going that long, under the Code of Conduct, and this is why I want that in there. It states, um, on number 10, if serving as a chair of committee maintains the code at all times during public meetings, enforcing the Code of Conduct, I'm gonna skip down. Committees shall not meet for more than two hours or past 10:00 P.M., whichever comes first, without a motion and a vote on record to extend the meeting. Right? So you have a lot of professionals that are coming in, whether they're attorneys and, and engineers that are sitting there until 1:30 in the morning. You get that late, you're not getting a good decision from anybody.
Everybody wants it.
I know that, um, a camera person would be more than happy not to be here until 1:15 in the morning since she enjoyed that night. But this is important because they weren't aware, I talked to the Chairman of that the following day, and he wasn't aware that there was even such a rule in place, so that's what prompted me to ask about it, and then our little secret bookkeeper grabbed the bottom of the drawer and showed me that we had this little committee book, so that's why I wanted to just review it and update it. The last time this was done, it was 1994.
Yeah. Great idea to get it noticed and updated.
So if you guys don't have anything else on that, we can go on to the next one. 21st, yeah, we can put it on the 21st, we don't try to keep next.
So Mr. Chairman, if I can chime in?
Yes.
Section 3.4, which lays out the duties of the Secretary of each committee, is pretty much outdated. I think this is the board's opportunity to establish a uniform policy with respect to minute taking. Needs to be understood by all our boards and committees that we pay an employee to take minutes.
Not transcripts.
Not transcripts. And while each board and commission may have its own unique approach to the way it wants conversations recorded on specific topics, or an individual committee member may have a passion and want to review what's said in the minutes. The reality is, the Open Meetings Act and part of this policy later, deeper in, lays out what is required to be in the minutes, and the minute taker really need to not do much more than that. The one place I would like to make sure we address is, in the minutes, it, in the, uh, handbook, it describes what is absolutely required in minutes, and then it gives what would be nice to have and what it should have. The one thing I think is misplaced, and I'm trying to find the exact language, but I must have scrolled by it. What, no, it's not in the appendix, it's actually in the handbook itself, the.
So on the, actually, page 37 of the open meeting law, Matt?
Yeah, no, I'm in, I'm in here. All right, so this is record keeping, it's section 4.9, it's on, runs from 16 to 17. And so it, the clause begins, minutes should include, and then I'm looking at the third bullet point, exact wording of all motions, including who made the motion and who seconded it. That is an absolute minimum, that must be in the minutes. And it is very important that chairs make sure that the dialogue is very clear so that the minute taker can record the exact words of the motion. Because in some circumstances, the choi- choice of word may be very important in a regulatory function.
Right.
And they have to make sure they have it exactly right. So that's, that's one thing I would flag. I agree with you, all procurement stuff is really old, this is 30-year-old document. This was written before the Town Administrator Act was passed, which also created Gene's position, so there's a lot of references here to Town Accountant, which would actually now be Municipal Planning Director.
So would it be wise to add timestamping into the, oh, yeah, uh, onto the minutes? So add your file to the minutes so that, and if somebody wanted to go through it?
Yeah, I think that, that is what really makes the minutes useful to the public.
Right.
Right? Because a cable group keeps all of the videos, and Douglas videotapes every board and commission, which is very unusual compared to the rest of Massachusetts. So if you care about something enough to go to the minutes, you find the timestamp, go to the video on your computer, and you scroll to that exact moment, you can hear what you need to hear. It actually makes government much, much more transparent. Selectman Bowden's not here tonight, he has often been voice raised to have this included in all the minutes, and it's a huge improvement.
Well, like you said, this is a good time to just standardize what, what it is that we're looking for. Thank you.
Speaking of minutes.
Yeah, so we have one set of minutes from, uh, March 12th. And this is a good example of what we're trying to avoid. There's much work, it's just a lot of work for the minute taker to do this, and I don't think that she has to necessarily go through all of this.
Under number two, it says that I seconded the motion. I'm almost like 99% certain I didn't second the motion, cause I was leading that discussion, cause you had refused yourself.
I did, yes.
And I was chairman, I'm pretty sure Tim seconded that motion.
I can watch it tomorrow and make the.
Just to make sure.
I pronounced his name, Joseph, instead of Josiah. And I did, I said, uh, permanent member? It was checked off permanent, and you corrected me on. I'll, I'll go into that and write it.
Is that it?
That's all that I found.
Yeah. Okay, you guys are set. So we do a motion, so we do a second?
Uh, I'll motion to approve the Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 minutes as amended.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings this up to the town administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, briefly, uh, the agenda includes mention of the designation of Police Chief Miglianico to serve as acting town administrator, uh, from the 24th of April through the 29th. My wife and I are going away for our anniversary, we'll be quite a distance away, and while we will be reachable in the case of extreme emergency, we will all be able to, so thank you, so, yeah, accessible, good part of the time. In the intervening time, uh, I'm trying to get as much of the loose ends completed so that I can actually relax. Town meeting is largely set. I know that we have the meeting coming up with the moderator, which will be the night before I leave, so, um, we'll get that spurred away. The, one item I wanna take from the warrant and discuss a little bit, because I, frankly, would be surprised if it passes town meeting, but I want to draw attention to some issues arising from it that need to be addressed. We need to continue to work as an administration and as elected and appointed officials to find a way to solve these problems. And I'm referring to the stormwater management bylaw, which is proposed out of the Community Development Department, and I believe was supported by CONCOM, but not by planning, and not by Finance Committee. It is based upon a model that is used in many communities across the common law. The degree to which Douglas is willing to accept models used by other communities is, I think, correctly called out by Finance Committee Member Carol Volinsky, saying, "In the past, we often had workshops, and we called in stakeholders and interested parties to help refine these things before they found their way into town meeting." That is still how the town operates, so there's no pride of authorship or sense of loss if this bylaw doesn't pass a town meeting. Some of the issues do need to be brought up, and one that is glaring is that the public looks to town government for support and relief when they are, when they face things that are out of their control, which they believe are in somebody else's control and are harming that. And if you live next door to a significant development, whether it's a subdivision or solar farm or warehouse, whatever is being built, and you have enjoyed your yard and things you've put in your yard for many, many years without interruption, without interference, and now after this project starts, you look out and you're, you're in the foot of water.
Yeah, new water feature.
And, you know, it might be in your basement, and it's largely because that large-scale site work directed stormwater onto your property, whether it's simple consequence of the way material is organized, or whether somebody consciously took the water, sent it to a pipe, and then shot the pipe back your property. And if we think this through, we have a significant gap in local regulation. It is unlawful to discharge, to gather water and discharge it into a public sanitary system or catch basin system, so illicit discharge. Both the highway commission, the highway superintendent and this board, acting as highway commissioners, can actually prohibit that and fine it in or order that it's be stopped. But that's a very narrow area of jurisdiction to think about, it's just the roads and the rights of way, and any country drainage or pipes that we have running through those rights of way. In the zoning code, there is a presumption that is based largely upon old nuisance doctrine in the common law, and it was incorporated in a very loose and vague way to the environmental standards, and I think it's section nine of the zoning code. Doesn't matter which section it is, but that's where you find it. And the language is basically, you know, it is forbidden to release things from your property that get to somebody else's property and cause harm. So fumes, dust, and presumably stormwater, but if you take a step back and you think it through, it's a zoning violation at, that presumes that the damage has already happened. Right? So the zoning official doesn't really have the authority to write anybody up for a zoning violation.
Until it's filed.
Unless the damage has already occurred. Further, nuisance doctrine is built upon persistence. So if I'm outside one day and for whatever reason I unleash a can of something that has rotted, rotten canned meat, right, and it stinks to high heaven, and I'm in a really close neighborhood and it bothers my neighbor, they don't have a case of nuisance, certainly wouldn't get any kind of zoning. The notion is that this is something that would recur, is repeated, if you wanna win anyway. And if you're the landowner who's being harmed, once is enough. Right? Especially when it comes to stormwater, the kind of damage it can do. So the zoning code doesn't quite do it. The planning board has considerable discretion over site plan review and can try to push an applicant or developer to deal with stormwater in certain ways. However, there really isn't a firm foundation for the planning board to act to prevent somebody from channeling water into a pipe and then discharging the pipe in very close proximity to somebody else's property. It's a bad practice, and it shouldn't be followed, but there is nothing that prohibits it. At common law, if Selectman Smith dumps, gathers water into a pipe and dumps it on Selectman Fitzpatrick's land, Selectman Fitzpatrick can probably sue Selectman Smith and win because you've, it's not a common enemy anymore, the water falling from the sky. Now you've decided to consciously collect it and send it to make your neighbor's problem, that's not a winner lawsuit. That's not a good position to be in, the person dumping that water. But who does, you know, a lot of our residents don't have the money to hire counsel and file lawsuits or injunctions against corporate entities that have counsel on, on speed dial. So a lot of these folks look to the town to have something to say. The only other area of jurisdiction is if all that water finds its way into a protected wetland, then CONCOM has significant authority to prevent the activity from continuing and to fine it until it stops. But again, and there's awful lot of land that's not a protected wetland resource. So this is what we were trying to do, trying to start a conversation about what is the appetite of the community for allowing this to continue? Undebated, you know, the weather per, is absolutely resistant to being predicted. Right? It's almost like if we go out and say it's gonna snow today, it won't. You're almost sure of it. And when the town administrator closes town hall, you can be sure the storm doesn't arrive. It's pretty much how it always was for me. So I usually just let it snow like heck, and then make the call at the last minute, is what I should do. But in any case, you know, after all this conversation this year, since we've had a very, very bright year, who knows? We may enter a drought this year, and in October, we'll all be sitting around this table trying to figure out where we're gonna get some water. And it'll make lawyers out of all of us who thought stormwater regulation was necessary. And it'll make lawyers out of all of us who thought stormwater regulation was necessary right now. But to the extent there are extremes in the weather, this is a good thing to consider trying to move forward. And maybe the applicability of the bylaw should be more narrowly tailored, for instance, to, you know, commercial grain or commercial sized operations. I don't know how you would define that, but I think people's appetite would be sufficiently whetted to accept regulation of a major corporation coming in and involving anywhere from 20, 50, 100 acres, whatever limit it is that people want to set, as opposed to someone developing a house on a one and a half acre lot and being forced to do all kinds of storm water. So it is understandable in a rural community that limits on cutting wood are not going to be well received. And that's one of the major sticking points here is that the bylaw is drafted, says, you know, you clear more than an acre. Well, the reality is, a lot of people heat their homes with wood or use wood to support the heating of their home from other sources, and that may own seven or eight acres here in town. So they may collectively go out and.
If the house is a distance from the road, you've got to claim more than an acre.
Exactly. So it becomes to be, it might be too tight of a, too small of a spigot for that to go through. So I think though, if all folks will listen to each other, we might be able to find common ground to get forward with a regulation that makes sense and that people can live with, that at least gives the town the opportunity to intervene on taxpayers' behalf when a major corporation comes in and specifically dumps water on their property. So having said that, that's most of my report. A lot of what we're doing now is technically, by the time we get to town meeting, this is one of the things about municipal government, our rhythm of work, we're asking town meeting for permission to do a whole bunch of things. We had to prepare the warrant. We're not working on that stuff anymore. That's like, that's last week or last month's work. We've moved on to the next series of things, which for me is, we have a significant number of procurements to do, we have ARPA money that we need to get out the door by December, and that is really first and foremost. On my radar screen is completing the fire department project, the electrical upgrade and the HVAC upgrade, and getting a plan in place for the water service improvement here on Depot Street, which was the big project that the slipboard approved for ARPA. It is my understanding that that engineering is well underway, so now it's just a question of making sure we have sufficient funds to afford the project. That last week, they were out here taking borings.
Yeah.
Shaking the ground pretty hard, and the water in town hall is rusty red or brown virtually every day from a little shake.
Yeah.
So my hunch is 110, 120-year-old pipe in Depot Street might be reaching the end of their useful life.
We're considering they're only 70 years on best on age.
Yeah. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. I'll, a fair amount to say to the board in executive session.
Yep.
Just, when you had mentioned your, your going away, you had said April 29th. I know on the paper it says 9:00 p.m., April 28th.
Yeah, so I'll be, I'll be back, I'll be on the ground.
Okay.
So if I needed to run up here, I could.
Just wanted to clean that up, that's all.
But really, I won't be touching my inbox until the 20th.
Yeah, just don't want to, have no administration, administrator, you know, should something happen.
Disorder, audio colored paper clips early.
That's it. Exactly. That's all.
With that, we move up to number eight, open session topics for, topics not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Does anybody have anything? No? No? With that, entertain a motion to go into executive session for interest in real property at Riedel Road.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session for discussion on interest in real property on Riedel Road and to enter open session for sole purpose of.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye. You have to roll a call back.
Huh?
You do have to roll a call back.
Osma? Aye. Fitzpatrick? Aye.